Folks, we're gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. I'm... Little technical difficulties.
Test, test, test. Can you test? We can't hear anything. Get, where's Dr. Webb?
He's right, right there.
Test.
Alright, here we go. Everybody here sitting in the back of the room okay? Alright, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Mr. Crowder, would you give us an invocation please sir?
Let us pray. Gracious Father, we thank you for the opportunity to come to transact the temporal business of the Union County Public Schools. Gracious Father, we thank you for the parents that provide children for this Union County Public Schools. We thank you for the superintendent and her staff that provides guidance for Union County Public Schools. And we thank you for the Board of Education that makes decisions concerning Union County Public Schools. Gracious Father, we ask that whatever we say, whatever we do here tonight will be things that will be pleasing in your sight. We ask dear God that you would look after the children that attend these Union County Public Schools. And gracious Father, we ask that you would lead and guide this board in the direction that you would have us to go. Gracious Father, we ask that when we leave tonight, that we will leave without animosity toward anyone. Gracious Father, we ask that you would help us to not be secretive in what we do. Help us to provide to the community whatever that's necessary for the community to know. And gracious Father, we ask that you would spread love across this Union County Public Schools District so that everyone in this school district will know that our children will have an equal opportunity to get a good, basic, sound education. In thy name we pray. Amen.
Alright, pledge allegiance. Everybody stand please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright, let's go over a little bit of housekeeping. Mobile devices, if everybody's got them. I know people are gonna be tweeting and posting. If you'll go ahead and put those on vibrate so that we're not disturbing anybody. First, that would be great. Second, do I have any other elected officials in the audience this evening? If you're here, you just let us know you're here and we wanna thank you for coming. Alright, secondly, I would like to recognize Brad Breedlove. Brad is the principal here at Monroe High School. Brad has opened his home up here for us for this evening and we appreciate that. Brad is also our district principal of the year and now regional principal of the year. And I have a good feeling he's going to be the state principal of the year. Alright, so, couple of things. This is a very... Couple of things. We understand that we're gonna go over some stuff that some of you guys aren't gonna like, some you may like. I would appreciate it if we would keep decorum. If it gets out of hand or people start getting unruly, the officers here are instructed to come and ask you to leave. Alright, I apologize for that, but the only way we're gonna get through this is to work together. So if y'all can bear with me for that, I would appreciate it. So now we're gonna move on with our meeting. Item four, approval of our agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve item four of the agenda as presented.
Ms. Savage, second. All in favor? It was unanimous. Moving on to our consent agenda. We have personnel issues and we have the Stallings Elementary School easement on there. Can I have a motion please? Got a motion for Ms. Savage to approve? Thank you, Mrs. Helms, for the second. All in favor? Aye. One of the things that I neglected to state just a moment ago. Mr. Collins is not with us this evening. He will be in Florida with the Islam family at the memorial service and funeral there. So if you will all keep the Islam family and the Collins family in your thoughts and prayers, we'd appreciate that. Now we're gonna move on to the topic why everybody is here. Options to ease overcrowding. And we're gonna have a presentation from Dr. Ellis and Dr. Webb.
Board members, for you to see clearly, we've reserved you some seats down front so you can look. So if you want to leave the podium and walk down here by the flag and we've got seats for you down on the first row. Tony Burris, if you're in the audience, would you come down please? Tony? Anybody else have a tape recorder they wanna put down here? You're welcome too, if you want to. I'm sorry, what? Turn the microphone up. Well, possibly. Put it in the box. Test, test, test. Test. No test. Test. Anna, is that acceptable for recording? Okay, we're ready to go. Except for the presentation. Oh, so many people... Audience, let me ask you this. Have you pulled the presentation up on your little handheld? Because if you have, I can talk it. I was just waiting for the visual. Okay. Rob, you've got it loaded, right? Okay. Well, okay. Plan B. I'm a school teacher. Somebody, Rob, hand me that computer with the presentation. Folks, whenever we can get online, it will be online for you to peruse. We'll answer questions. And alright, let me ask, how do you do this one? Yeah. Okay. I'm gonna watch. Ah, there it is. At first you do not succeed. Try, try again. Are you ready to roll now? Hey, let's get the introduction off. Okay, thank everyone for being here tonight. Board members, thank you. We have... I've gotten to do what? Stay away from that, alright? Let me get right over here. If I've gotten to stay, well, there's one there, two. Arnaud must gonna stand right here. Sorry about this, everyone. We have looked at multiple options, both locally, statewide, and nationally, to ease overcrowding. And we have researched these options and want to do a presentation for you tonight. We have about seven or eight different things that you can consider, either solely, in combination, all, some, or none. Any of them will work with caveats. And staff stands ready to do any one or combination that the board decides that we need to do. So let's start the presentation. Oh, I've got this thing, okay? Mike, I think you wanna talk first because you did this at another meeting, so you start out first.
As you recall, the board directed us in looking at the population bubble and addressing that bubble with maximizing efficiency and optimizing the available seats at which we have. So, we had to define the population bubble, look at long-term adjustments. Could that long-term adjustments be handled through waiting out the bubble? Could the adjustment be handled through mobile units? Could the adjustment be handled through additions? New construction as far as elementary, middle, or high? Or did we have available seats and maximize those? Again, throughout this journey, staff had to keep in mind that we had to make sure that we could meet the core needs of our children. Meaning, make sure that we could provide them safety in a catastrophic situation. We could get them behind brick and mortar. We also had to make sure that we could meet the basic needs of providing them lunch and breakfast as well as the office space needed through guidance and administrative, et cetera. And then we looked at, like I said, to help us, guide us, how long is that bubble? Is that a 15, 20-year bubble? And where's the peak of that? And I shared with you, the bulk of that bubble is in, it starts in our 7th grade and it's working itself through our middle and through our high schools.
This map is, I drew for our principals last week a depiction of what we call the crescent or the curve or where the growth is. And if you'll see, the curve starts in the, sort of the southwestern and arcs up over towards Porter Ridge. The crescent, I guess that's the best way to say. And that is a visual of where the pocketed growth is and what we're trying to address with looking at different options, including but not limited to split track, multi-track, magnet, redistricting, mobile units, all different kinds of things. So I wanted you to have the visual. And because of the extreme growth in that lower western pocket, if the determination becomes that you're talking about moving children to different seats, I wanted everybody to have a visual to see where the growth is. And we had no way to go with the growth but like this. And that's, I can't talk it and do it at the same time. Alright, whoops, okay. The methodology, and Mike, you wanna talk about the methodology?
One of the things, the methodology is not a good algorithm here. If you look at the crescent, you've got South Carolina and New Charlotte-Necroburg, so you couldn't go backwards in any way. So you look here at the crescent and you had to work from the growth out. So, and that's what we did. So, we adjusted the assignment plan by affecting the least number of students as possible. I thought that would get a laugh. The reason that we say that is because there are available seats further east when you look at the forecast sheets in our Forest Hills cluster. So if you are looking and wondering, well, why are some schools' forecasts in the watch area remain about the same? That's where we look. The growth is not in that area that we're observing in that crescent area. So we felt comfortable leaving that there. Or we would've had to pull more children to continue to push them further. So when we say that we tried to limit the number of children we affected, that's because we didn't want to push more children further into the Porter Ridge, Piedmont, Forest Hills areas. Because that's how that crescent worked. We're focused on areas identified by the 2013 demographic study. I will share with you, I know that a lot of people question McKibben's study. I will tell you this. McKibben's accuracy is within 2% nationwide. And for Union County Public Schools, that's a quarter percent with the UCPS system wide. When you look at his last study and you begin to question those years, now you wonder, well, his forecast was off. It was not off in the year 2010 when we contracted with him for that, that eight, nine study for 10. We just did not bring him back in and waste our resources when we were in the beginnings of the recession. It made no sense to come back in and tell us what we already knew, that the building had stopped. We were growing and estimated at about 1 to 1.25%, not that 8, 9, 10, as high as 13% that we had been experiencing. So, we elected to save our dollars, not bring McKibben back in, to adjust his forecast sheets. McKibben's report, if you looked at that 2010 prior to that recession, he was off for Union County Public Schools 0.15%. And we always have to look at maximizing transportation efficiency. When you look at efficiency, if you were to speak with Mr. Kingsbury or Mr. Tilden, they would talk to you, efficiency's not just miles. It's not just that point A to point B. It's the number of students on a bus. If you see that bus, then they have to put a second bus on that route. So there are a lot of things that go into efficiency, not just it's six miles from this point to this point. We also, our initial plan looked at grandfathering rising seniors. I shared that information with the facilities committee at our last meeting. We will share with you that same information, but including grandfathering rising juniors as we were directed at the last meeting. The column names changed in our forecast sheets looking at, when it comes to the watch level as well as the tapping level because we heard from the parents that they weren't sure when that tapping would take place. So we clearly put watch area, when we began to watch, and target and working with municipalities and looking at the housing permits at which they are awarding and granting and seeing what we can do. I can tell you, we started looking at this as a facilities committee. We brought Dr. McKibben on last April. We had discussions about the forecast and the potential of the economic engine starting to start up and grow. And we decided to bring McKibben on in April. We had those discussions after about, I believe it's probably in February, if not January. And the, one of the things at which the Board of Education asked us was, was, let's try to put a plan together that we wouldn't be sitting back here a year from now or two years from now going through this again. So we looked at five years. I shared with the facilities committee that for our purpose of planning, we didn't wanna go past five years. And the reason for that is twofold. One, when you start getting seven, eight, nine, 10 years out, for us, we work with the county in budgeting and planning on a five-year plan. So we have to be able to give them the information if we're needing construction dollars well in advance. Because it takes us 24 months to come up out of the ground if we own the property and up to 36 months if we're having to go procure the land and then send everything out to bid and all that, so forth. So, that's what we did. Now, I will tell you, as we have discussed before, you must be very, very careful because of this domino effect of redistricting in this plan of what we call the butterfly effect. It's not that I wanna move 50 children or we're an aging-out community and we're only 75 or we're 100. Because we pushed, if you allow this 50 to come in, or this 100, or whatever their number may be, you may very well be telling this 50 or this 100 that you're gonna have to go out. So, you just, you have to factor that in.
I'm gonna talk a little bit about... I'm gonna talk a little bit about budgeting and the way, because in regard with every one of these options up here. Union County Public Schools, as most of you know, but some of you may not, and I will tell you that anybody that attended the trial every day got a crash course in Union County Public Schools finances. We get our money in three buckets. We get federal money, we get state money, and we get local money. The majority of our money is state money, followed by local money, followed by federal money. The federal money is tied up so tight, we're audited multiple times a year. There is no wiggle room with federal money whatsoever. Mr. Jeffries would attest to the headaches attached to the federal money. The state, people believe that we get money for children. What we get in Union County Public Schools and every other LEA, that's school district in North Carolina, is position allotments. We get position allotments based on our 20-day numbers. So this year, we were given, I believe, Dr. Clark, it was 1,985 teaching positions. So, we don't get money, we get positions. It can be a 30-year teacher making a 30-year salary, or it can be a first-year teacher, but we get positions and the state pays the positions. They also give us instructional money for children. It's O-61 money and it's supplies, equipment, and materials. And that is what we use with our, for our instructional program. That money is pretty much tied up. The local funding, and we've had a dispute and we're still in the middle of that dispute. Things are looking better. But that money, the county commissioners, when they pass their budget, they cut our 6,000 series. That's our support. That's where we could pull a little bit of money. They cut that budget by 11%. They fully funded the 5,000 series and that is our instruction money. They also put in place, and legally they can, under statute, that we cannot transfer money, but certain amount, which is almost negligible. We don't transfer money out of instructional anyway because that goes to the children for things they need for instruction. So I say that to you and to you board members to let you know, those are the three parts of money from which we work. And we have to, would have to find money for whatever option you choose from one of those. The 6,000 series is tapped out because the county cut us 11%. I can't touch federal money. I get positions in state money and 85 or 86% of our state budget is tied up in positions. So, that leaves local and the local has tied our hands that we have negligible movement. And so, a lot of people seem to believe we can pull a million-dollar rabbit out of the hat. I'm telling you, I got no rabbits unless they're in a line items, a line item. And that, I just wanted to make sure that we're clear on the funding sources and the strings tied to each of the funding sources. The options we considered, multi-tracking, split track, K-6 configuration, build new schools, build additions, schools of choice, leave the cap in place, and mobile classrooms. Those were the things that our team researched. Now I will tell you that back during the days of GROW, we had a facilities committee or a facilities department that did all this. That was collapsed with the downturn in the economy. And so, the staff that is working on the regular children issues every day is doing this now. And we have done a considerable amount of research. We certainly can go back and do more. If you have questions about anything that I can't answer tonight, I have no problem with that. But I want to make sure that you are informed prior to you making a choice based on what you think is best, both fiscally and for every child in this district. So let's go on and let's start looking at those. And I think I've got this. Multi-tracking. The pros and cons. We can increase the facility capacity by about 33%, give or take a little. That will relieve overcrowding. We can do remediation during intercession. And our schools that have been year-round know about the intercession and what that does for children and helps them not to have that, what we call the summer slide with reduced learning. It is beneficial, very beneficial to the disadvantaged student. Our schools in the Monroe Cluster, our Title I schools, have determined they were gonna go year-round. Shiloh, which is not a Title I school, in the Sun Valley Cluster, very high test scores, they go year-round. And also, that the off-track teachers can be substitutes during intercession. Multi-tracking would be 45 days to school and 15 days off. And 45 days to school and 15 days off. And 45 days to school and 15 days off till you get in your obligatory 185 days. The cons to this, the intercession cost. When we did intercession and we've cut that out mostly, the lack of funding during the downturn in the economy, was about $400,000. Because you have your children who are struggling the most, working with teachers. You have to pay for buses, you have to pay for meals, teachers, the whole nine yards. The O and M, and when I say O and M, I'm talking operational and maintenance. Increases due to more wear and tear of the building. Right now, we save, it's over a million dollars a summer. We save by turning, and principals can attest that the buildings are hot, and then at 11 o'clock, we turn the air conditioning off. So, to save money. And we have saved, had realized substantial savings there. That savings would be gone and that savings then has gone, been put back in the instructional program and different things. Another one, transitions, I mean more teacher mobility. When you're thinking about tracking three on and three off, I'm going to, if I'm a teacher, and it can be done, but I'm not sure how, why it is in a kindergarten classroom that the children have to change classrooms every X times. And we would try to work it to minimize that, but in some cases, we won't be able to. Organization would be a nightmare, especially for little ones because you try to get them in a routine quickly to make it good for them to know, well, next I do this, and next I do this. The four tracks. If you're looking at, especially at middle school, and I am middle school to the core. If you look at middle school, the four tracks, you lose that community within the student body. You lose a lot of the programs that you can do. You lose a lot of the things that children can work on together. Scheduling issues with siblings on different tracks. I can foresee if we do this, that it could be, I'm in elementary school and I am possibly on track two. And I'm on track during the summer months. And my middle schooler and my high schooler are on regular track, the regular 185-day. And I also need to say this to you, just to point it out because it's the truth. When we, if we go to multi-track, and which we can, that will affect every child in the school. Not this... not this, not simply the children you're talking about redistricting. It will affect every child in the school. And in the past, when we have, anytime we've changed the schedule, I'm talking about time-wise or summers, we have had parents vote on it and we had to have a 75% pass rate or parent approval rate before we've changed the times. In new schools we opened, I know we did the same thing, we would have the parents vote out of the gate to let them know, find out. And electives and activities may be offered on some tracks. And here's the deal, if we provide it for one child in the Union County Public Schools, we need to make that same commitment to every child in the Union County Public Schools. And with multi-tracks, you won't have to have extra teachers because the teachers can track with their children. What you will have to have is you will have to have extra guidance support. You will have to have an extra nurse. You will have to have extra media. You will have to have extra teacher assistance. You will have to have extra, not principal, they're 12 months, but assistant principal support. You will have to pay extra for cafeteria. You will have to pay extra for bus drivers. You will have to pay extra for gas for the buses. So, I want to make you aware that with the pros, there are cons, and with the cons, there are definite pros. I just want to make sure that I'm very clear on those items. And we can do it. We can make this happen if that is the will. Split-track, this is what I call shift work. And it's doable, and I'm going to explain it to you. What it is, it doubles the instructional space. You would have first shift come in at probably 6:00 a.m. and because the state of North Carolina says children must have a minimum of 5.5 instructional hours during the day, and then you add on lunch, and then you add on recess, and then you add on transition times, and you add on bathroom times. If I go to shift one, I might get on the bus about 5:00, 5:30. I start class at 6:00. I go to school until 12:30 or 1:00. The bus takes me home and then the bus goes and runs another route to pick up the second shift and they probably won't start until about 2:00. When they start at about 2:00, we're going to have to give them the same six and a half, seven hours. So, we'll finish the second shift about 7:30, 8:00 p.m. at night and children will be transported home. The pros, it doubles instructional space. It really does. We have doubled the bang for the buck with space. It allows attendance schedule flexibility, first shift versus second shift. It, we can separate upper grades from lower grades. That's a possibility. And we can vary schedules for virtual and customized learning. We can, that is a pro. The cons, here again, your siblings may not be on your same schedule. We could not run after-school or before-school care like we run now because the facilities that we use for before and after-school care are the very facilities we use during the school day. So, that would cut out before and after-school care. It will double our transportation costs because instead of running two routes today, we're going to be running four routes today. So, that will be doubled. A lunch schedule, if you've ever been in a building and there's a snow day and principals are trying to feed children before they get home, it is a nightmare. You're shoving lunches at anything that will stand still. Lunch schedules will be hard to do if you do this. We can do it though, board. We can do it. It will require twice as many lockers unless you double or triple up on lockers. I always had kids double up on lockers, things always got stolen and there were always problems. But we can do it. Additional teachers and staff are needed. Here again, your teachers, we won't have to have any extra teachers, classroom teachers, but we will need extra support staff. And by that, I'm talking media specialists, I'm talking guidance counselors, I'm talking nurses, I'm talking secretarial, clerical, I'm talking assistant principal, I'm talking cafeteria. We can do it. And it will affect activities during the school day, possibly. I don't, I think that's a minor, but it will affect that. However, it is very doable. K-6 schools. Now, right now, you, I'm sorry. You want me to back up? I'm sorry. Okay, I'm sorry. He hears slow and I talk fast, I'm sorry. This is so much what I, this is so much, okay, I understand that. This is not as natural for everyone as it is me. Let me back up here. Let me back up to what? Okay, all right, I'll go ahead. You know, folks, I'm doing about the best with this presentation I can. Just hear me out before you make the comments, please. K-6. Right now, we do a K-5, 6, 8, 9, 12 under policy. I believe it's 1, 28, 29, 30, 31, somewhere in there. Can certainly change the policy. That's not an issue. We would need to decide, are you going to go the K-6 and sixth grade be an elementary? Because that is, that is very different from sixth grade being housed at the elementary school and working as the middle school. The pros, if you go K-6 as an elementary, extends the elementary framework for sixth grade students. It provides the vertical articulation programming. That means that sixth graders would be treated just like elementary school students with regard to, we would be covering the curricula, the common core, but it would be, they would lose the middle school if we just, and then I'm going to talk about putting it in middle school, just one second. The cons, the elementary building is not age-appropriate for sixth graders, especially those who've had the growth spurt early with regard to seating. We will need six to 10 mobile classrooms for sixth grade classes and support wherever we determine to do it. There will be additional costs to provide GEMS and CTE stands for Career and Technical Education. If we decide to treat the sixth graders as middle schoolers housed in an elementary school, we have a historical perspective on that. When Marvin Ridge Middle opened, the construction was delayed due to bad weather during the winter. And Dr. Tom Bull and Dr. Laurel Healy opened Marvin Ridge Middle at Kensington Elementary, back when Kensington had 300 students, if you can believe that. And they had a wing of Kensington and they were there from the first day of school until spring break, which I believe was right around the first of April. So, it's about seven months they were there. And what we did was we provided the middle school opportunity for elementary schoolers. And when I say that, they had the same opportunities for foreign language, they had the same opportunities for dance, drama, art, music, and more of an exploratory course. I believe, and I was talking with Dr. Bull about this, I believe we spent around 3/4 of a million dollars to do that for those children, to provide them the same. And here again, it goes back to the human capital for the Career and Technical Education teachers, a band instructor, foreign language teachers. We would need guidance for sixth grade. The media center does not support sixth graders. In a K-6 setting, you're going to have to have a very tight lunch schedule. And lunch schedules are already pretty tight in schools anyway because you're going to be adding those. The bell schedule would be a challenge because sixth grade day is a little bit longer day and buses, more buses would be needed, more cars would be in the stack line and create more traffic issues. And I've spoken with some of our principals that have said, please come out to our school and watch the dismissal and the startup anyway with the numbers we have. So, pros and cons of sixth grade, but we would need clear direction. Do you intend for sixth graders to be treated as elementary schoolers? And that's retrofit to some part, board members. I would need clear direction from you on that. And I would also, I need a password. I would also need to know if you are talking about the middle school concept. We can build new schools. A new elementary, middle, and high school is around 81 million. Dr. Webb is going to talk to you. And certainly if the board chose to do that, you would need to seek approval from the county commissioners for the funding and we will be happy to facilitate that. We could certainly build additions to schools. We're looking at additions to elementary schools. The cost, we've got it later in the presentation, I don't remember. We could cap schools. Capping schools will increase the transportation cost and we have a breakdown for that for you later in the presentation. And new attendees would not go to school with their neighbors. And I get that if I'm in the community already, I need to be going to my school as opposed We're going to be here all night with y'all clapping. And that will be a decision that needs to be made. The, I'm just going to leave that one alone. Leave it alone. Leave it alone. Choice. Now, this was one that was presented to us as I was doing some reading. And we have a couple of counties in North Carolina doing this choice and called them to talk with some folks and looked at their data. And what they do is they create magnets throughout the county and children can apply to go to the magnets. The biggest problem they, and we'll certainly research this more because this has got my attention, but they, what we have found is that their most overcrowded schools are their most affluent schools because parents don't want to leave those schools. And to do, to make, guys, please let me finish. I'm going to roll here. I got this in my head. I got to get it out. For, to do that, we would have to create some seats in every school and that's going to mean moving some kids out. And if we made schools of choice without moving kids, the schools of choice would be our schools that are not overcrowded, which is where if you decide to redistrict, the students are going to be going that everybody's upset about anyway. So, that sword is the Damocles sword. It's sharp on both sides. While it is a real good idea, in theory, when you go to looking at the nuts and bolts of it, folks don't want to leave the more affluent schools, no matter what the magnet is, they want to stay in their home school. Let's see, here we go. Transportation would not be provided in some of that, or it would be if we could find the money. It would be, that would be a board decision. That can and has led to overcrowding in affluent neighborhoods. Admittance would be by space available and there's no diversity there. It's unbalanced by choice and that can lead, and I'm not sure it will or it won't, can lead to segregation. So, those are the options. And before we go on to the cost for it, ask me questions. Are there any questions you have about any of the options? Or did I talk too fast and I need to repeat something? I'm happy to. Okay, keep going. All right. Mike is going to talk to you about some of the costs associated.
When you look at the, can you hear me in the back? When you look at the cost for the elementary school, middle school, high school, if you were looking at all three, that's an $81 million cost. That does not include some of the soft costs as designs and architect fees, et cetera. However, as a board, you can decide that maybe you just needed an elementary school or you just needed a middle school or a high school. You have that menu option, I guess, to order what you want at the elementary school. But that cost would be anywhere from 14 million up to 81 million dollars. If you do not cap or reassign, meaning that you're looking at mobile units to offset this bubble of growth, you are looking at approximately 2.89, almost 2.9 million dollars. The cost of those 49 new mobile classrooms, in that 49 are restroom units, could be office units, could be the cafeteria units. All of that's included in the cost. It would go based up on the schools that would need the mobile units. But also, you have to include in that 2.9 million dollars, approximately $236,000 per year to operate that additional footprint that you're adding to the school system.
How long would it take to get new mobile units on campus?
Typically, the county commissioners release the budget to us in June. For us, we'd have to go out to RFP, reverse bid, et cetera. The earliest that we could get everything approved through the DPI, get them set up and installed, the quickest we could get students in those units would be second semester. So, it would be the end of January. For those, Dr. Ellis asked me for DPI, that's Department of Public Instruction, we are required to send the schematics and the engineering drawings so they can approve them before we can even move forward. So, not only would you have to deal with that 2.9, the 236 utility costs to operate those, but you're going to have to bridge that gap for the first semester of either extending the cap or some other alternative to bridge the first semester until the units were available for the students to occupy. Looking at the cost for the split-track, I just picked one cluster, I just did the Marvin Ridge Cluster because that's the first maps that we look at. When I looked at the split-track, it would cost approximately $1.8 million per year. So, you'd have to determine how many schools you're going to place on a split-track. To do that, you can, again, order from the menu. If it's one elementary school, you can see that's two, almost $232,000, guys, per elementary school. If it's a middle school, it's $343,000 for additional operations and maintenance costs. You then must add in the additional cost for transportation. Some new fuel truck, according to our transportation department, to receive that fuel truck or procure it, about nine months. But you can see the fuel truck's $100,000 and to operate those buses would be about
The bottom bullet does not include the additional months of employment for certified and non-certified staff. The 1.8 is expensive. We have not had a chance to winnow down the exact amount for the human capital there, but it would be extra months of employment that we would have to do. And I'm just looking at what we did with Marvin Ridge for seven months. How many years ago was that? Six, seven, seven years ago or so. And it was right around 3/4 of a million dollars there. So, there will be a fairly hefty human capital cost there. It's doable, but there will be the cost for the human, for the staff.
Continue with the cost. If you look at maintaining the capping, the current cap that's in place and looking at the additional schools that may go into the cap area, that cost is $2,299,000 and change. That, working with transportation, equates to 16 new buses. What this does not include is the compensation for the drivers and the fuel costs and so forth in there. That's simply to purchase the buses that would be needed. That's about $90,000 per bus. We have to secure those funds from the county commissioners. That's a capital purchase for us as well. We looked at additions and again, we can do anything that's on this so-called menu. The additions is about 1.9, and it's 1.5 to 1.9, looking at if we have a favorable bid market. I can tell you that it's getting more challenging to get a favorable bid market as the economy continues to crank up. But you have to give us about one and a half to two years to build after the funding is placed. But if we're doing additions, there would be no cost for the additional land. K-6 schools, we looked at. Again, we had experience with that. Again, for one year, that cost is a little over $1 million. That's the, those funds would go to purchase four buses. You see the cost there. To operate those buses and maintain them, we would need 10 mobile classrooms. The et cetera on the mobile classrooms is because there's some ancillary things that must go in. For example, the wireless mesh. As you know, we're just now getting the wireless mesh in on a rotation basis from where it was delayed on the order from the lawsuit that we're, we've just been in. So, we have to put wireless mesh for the internet around the mobile units. You have ramps that you have to deal with. You've got your furniture, student desks, teacher desks, filing cabinets, et cetera. So, that's the et cetera part that's going in there. Correct. And again, you can see to operate the utility cost for those, the footprint that you're adding for those 10 mobile classrooms. And again, it does not include what Dr. Ellis had shared with you earlier, you'd have to make a decision whether you're moving into that elementary curricula at a K-6 or if you're going to replicate the middle school curricula because that would be additional personnel in those areas of guidance, media specialists, et cetera. Multi-tracking. Again, went with the first cluster in order of our maps, looked at the multi-tracking with the Marvin Cluster. It was... It was $702,000 and change per year. The additional yearly facility operations and maintenance, again, a yearly cost, is $110,000 and change for elementary school and $205,000 and change for your middle schools. Multitracking really is not a viable option for your high schools because of all of the athletics and extracurricular and co-curricular things that are taking place after schools. A lot of times, if you, you'll see it is primarily at an elementary and not utilized a lot even at the middle school level. The additional cost for transportation is $386,000 and change. And again, the above figure does not include cost for the additional months of employment for certified and non-certified staff. As we went through budget cuts, our principals are issued the support staff in months of employment. And we have very few of those support staff that are in 12 months. Reassignment, the last option. There's no additional cost to all the taxpayers.
Folks, let's keep it down.
No new schools for five years, what you asked us to look at. Possible, no reassignments needed until new schools are built. Reason I said possible is because you would not have a system wide reset as far as redistricting. But if you had a bubble that bled over, I will just pick one, for example, if, for whatever reason, Sardis grew in that Indian Trail area and you needed, you had room at Pauley, you may have to straighten the line to address that. But you would not have a system wide reset. With that, I'll field any questions in regards to costs associated with various options
So, board members, if you've got questions, we'll do that now. If, if we need to go back down, we can do that. The thing that, that I understand how dynamic this is for you folks here in the room, the Board of Education has to represent 42,000 children, 210,000 taxpayers. And it's a very difficult thing to do because we know that we are affecting your lives and we're affecting your children. So, please work with us as we go through this and understand that when we were elected, it put our hands on the Bible. You know, we took an oath to represent not just you, but those folks that aren't here in the room tonight because they're not as affected as you are. But depending on what we do, they will be affected. No matter how we go down this path, we are a community from east to west. So there is no way that we affect your lives and we don't affect their lives. Or if we affect their lives, it will affect your lives. So I appreciate the energy and I appreciate greatly the passion. I am, my wife may be here somewhere in the room, being redistricted as well if this is what the board decides to do. So, please work with us as we work through this process over the coming weeks. We'll have the public forums. We want to hear what you have to say. But understand that we have to take into account 42,000 children that show up every day. Those are our stakeholders. And that we also represent the 200,000-plus taxpayers of Union County. So with that, do we have any other questions for staff at this time?
Yes, I do.
Ms. Hodges?
And I am not on the facilities committee, so if this stuff has been discussed in facilities, excuse me if I'm being redundant, but these are just some questions that I had. And the first one is really, would somebody please give me a clear definition of what
Your core capacity is the ability for us to meet those basic needs that I shared earlier, Ms. Hodges. It's the ability for us to make sure that we can feed our children. It's make sure that we, and we have federal rules and regulations that we have to feed between this time and, you know, earliest we can start and a time that we have to finish feeding our children. It also includes the ability to make sure that we can get our children behind brick and mortar in a catastrophic situation. It also includes the ability for us to load and unload children safely in a car rider line, as Dr. Ellis alluded to, the staging of our car riders. It also includes the ability to provide the bus lot and adequate space. Right now, if you look at Kensington, they're loading and loading cars. Do you wanna see how that looks? Go over. I invite you to go see the staging of those cars and how they sometimes have to move over and cut into the bus parking lot. I would ask you to walk the halls of some of the schools at which we have cap and speak with those principals and ask them if they feel that that facility is safe for the children with the number that they have at this time.
In addition to that, prior to starting this process, when we realized almost a year ago that this was something that the facilities and then the full board would be taking up, we got together a group of professionals, not just school people, but a group of professionals who for a living protect. We got representatives from the sheriff's department, from the Monroe Police Department, from fire and safety, from food services. Who else have I left out?
Safety director, our safety director, our maintenance director from the fire marshal staff. And again, part of this was so that we could adequately put a number at which we could put children safely and meet those basic needs I'm talking about in a building, so that if we had to move through this process, we had a good solid number that we weren't guessing what would be a safe number. So that's how we arrived at the capacity of our facilities.
And when we're talking about in a catastrophic situation, God forbid some kind of shooting situation, but as a student, I was part and party to a tornado coming through my high school and in a mobile unit and having to go inside. And so I guess maybe I'm just a little bit leery of that. Once you've been burned by something, you appreciate the fire of it. So this was not, the core capacity was not, as has been alluded in some social media sites, something that we dreamed up. It was, we got professionals to look at it, to see what they said they thought it was. It was not simply us going in and saying, "We think this is the number."
And are there, are there variances for core capacity? So in a situation where you would have an issue with maybe a fire marshal coming in, could you apply for variances to be able to go over capacity in any shape or form?
The only time the fire marshal would step in, if it was dealing with life safety, that we were not able to meet those type of life safety needs. So the fire marshal, if you're asking, are they gonna shut us down? No. But I think all of us have to look one another in the eye and say, can we put our children behind brick and mortar in these new facilities where, you know, you're looking to save energy, so there are a lot of windows for light, natural light to come in? So we're very, very limited. We would, in our new construction, be stacking children, not two layers, but could be three layers deep in our hallways.
I have a comment. Last time we had a hurricane, it was Hugo. I was a sophomore at South Mac High School. In this day and age, with our phones and all the weather news channels here with your Doppler radar and System 2 tracking. I know that we always, you know, we always err on the side of caution. Two weeks ago, we didn't even have one drop of precipitation, and we were aired on the side of caution, like you always say, Dr. Ellis, and we had a two-hour delay. We don't live in the Dust Bowl. And so I guess I'm just trying to...
Ms. Savage, I respect your opinion greatly as a member of the Union County Board of Education and the State Board of Education. I own my opinion. I too am a taxpayer, and I'm the superintendent of this school system. And I will say to you, I feel like we have done in good conscience and we have done due diligence to come up with core capacity. I don't know what else to tell you, ma'am. It was not me picking a number. It was the professionals coming up with a number. And I really don't know what else to say about that, other than I certainly appreciate your opinion and respect greatly. You're one of my nine bosses. I don't wanna get cross with you. But the bottom line is I stand on my opinion and I appreciate that you stand on yours. And I will do what the direction of the full board says for me to do, ma'am. I promise.
Well, so that being said, does core capacity vary from system to system? Or is it statewide? Or is it from...
Varies the design of the facility. The design of the facility varies your core capacity.
So with Sun Valley and Parkwood being our older schools, there is no concern about core capacity shifting children from newer facilities to older facilities?
Well, I can speak to that considering I was principal at Sun Valley High School when it had over 1,800 students, Ms. Hodges. And I can share with you, we met the needs of our children when it came to instruction as one of the top 10 high schools in the state of North Carolina, as well as with their
I just want to make it really clear that it would be very foolish for us all not to be asking many, many questions over something so important. And I'm trying to gather information to do my due diligence. So I thought that's why we were here.
Mr. Chair, may I ask, if that was, I'm just not sure if that was addressed to Dr. Webb and Meacham. We will try to answer every question you have. If that was, I'm not even, I'm not even sure if that was addressed to us, Ms. Hodges.
Well, I'll just continue with my list, if that's okay. My next question was, are we looking into doing any other type of second opinion analysis aside from the McKibben report?
Why?
I, you know, I am, I'm just interested in having my questions asked. And I'll tell you why. I'll tell you why.
I'm just asking for the clarification on...
Okay, well, it, from my, from my perspective, I'll make an analogy. When I go to the doctor for a sore throat and he diagnoses me with a sore throat, I'm pretty good with getting that one opinion. When I go to a doctor and I have cancer, I'm probably gonna get a second opinion for that because it's a magnitude issue. So I'm just asking the question. Have we, has the facilities committee, you know, discussed doing a second opinion on this? That, you know, that's it. I'm not saying that, I'm just asking.
Ms. Hodges, I think I can field your question for you. There's two types of studies when you're looking at a demographer's report.
I can barely hear you, Mike.
You're looking, there's two types of study. We utilized ORAD out of North Carolina State historically in the past. ORAD looked at trailing data, and it was never accurate for us as a, as a school system. It, the error was unbelievable. So there's really only two types. You have those that utilize trailing data that has happened in the past. That's not really effective for a growing school system. The other are forecasts like McKibben. So McKibben is well-known, well-respected as a demographer, and he has been extremely accurate, as I shared with you in the full board in the presentation. So that has not been a discussion that the facilities committee has taken up. Because again, we had experience with those that utilize trailing data. And ORAD was abysmal on a good day for us. And we have found this practice of forecasting to be much more reliable.
Okay, my next question is, if a school was going to be built, where would you see it going? Because I know that we have, you know, two areas of property that we already own, but where would you see, if something was gonna be built, that strategically it would be the best placement for it?
Well, obviously, it would go where the Board of Education directed us to place that. You know? As I shared with you earlier, that you've got the pendulum effect. You can either build it on the western side in the Cuthbertson area, or you can build it where we have property over at Henry Bridge area. That whittles off a year of your downtime because we don't own the property to build a high school.
And if we build it at the Henry Bridge area, then we would still have to move, shift lines, do redistricting.
Well, I was just curious because I didn't know whether we would be utilizing land we already have, or if that was an option, we would be looking at land that we don't, that we would be acquiring the land to, in other words.
We have land for a middle and high school on property D at Southern Henry Bridge. We have two parcels of land in the western end of the county that I believe, based on the demog, the map, the demographic map, we could possibly place an elementary school. And I'm looking at Don on that. We've got Cox Road, and then there at Cuthbertson, but I think there's only like 14 usable acres at Cuthbertson, if I remember correctly. There's enough, excuse me. We have, we do have donated acreage next to St. John's Forest, and then at Cuthbertson, on Cuthbertson Road. And we could put an elementary school on Cuthbertson Road.
And as far as magnet schools go, in your proposal, or just for clarification, would we be utilizing a school that's already in place? Or would we be looking for maybe a vacant facility somewhere in the county to put a magnet school? And I'm just asking these questions, I'm not expecting, I'm not trying to put you on the spot. I'm not expecting an immediate response to these. These are just some, some information that I wanted to know.
With a magnet school, off the top of my head, and we'd have to look around, we would have to look for a building. That's why I looked over at Don. We've not been, we've not been in search for a building. That's why I looked at him. Magnet schools have historically been placed inside the schools or specialized programs inside of schools.
Okay. And was there a lot of shifting of numbers when CADA opened from all over the county?
The initial class only took, I wanna say it was 40, and most academies, I think one academy, it took 30. I'm looking over here at folks that opened it. So it was, at that point in time, first year it was 40, and then it was 40 each year in some academies, and 30 dependent upon the program. And that was, that goes in each year. And then early college takes in about 80 a year. And early college... then early college takes in about 80 a year. And early college is housed on South Piedmont, and they're out of space. And of course, CADA is at the old Career Center that was renovated in, oh gosh, '05.
And then two other options that, you know, obviously, our emails have been full of people wanting to share options and wanting some questions asked. So I'm not sure whether these came to you guys or not. But I know that phased reassignment was something that had been brought up, as well as pretty much grandfathering everybody. And then... So I don't, when phased reassignment, from my understanding of inquiry, what would be that you stay in your school that you're in until you go to the next level?
Without running the numbers for that, I can't comment. We certainly can run the numbers. That will take us a few days. The option of grandfathering everyone, I'm just sort of puzzled, because we need to walk around a little bit to figure how, and think on this, how we're going to facilitate all of the buses and that sort of thing. I think that would...
And that would effectively be capping.
That would affect, that's what I'm going, that would effectively be capping. And that's already got a price tag on it.
And would there be any benefit to lifting the cap for the people who are enrolled by the end of this school year? And resetting the cap for future enrollment of starting in August? So you would, you would be lifting the cap so that somebody who is, say, in the Hunter Oaks neighborhood, is not going to Parkwood for the bus purposes, for purposes of bus inefficiency? They would go back to their neighborhood school, and then the cap is reset for all incoming people into the system as of the end of school in June?
We could, we could certainly do that. We would have...
I'm just throwing this question out. It's just some things to think about, too.
We could, we could have to run the numbers.
And keeping the cap, but possibly for, if you sold your house, the seat in that school would go with the sale of your house. So it would really just be to new construction in...
I think, I think I would need to consult with our general counsel, because that, I truly would need some guidance with the legality of that, because that would be fraught with legal, I would think. And I'm not trying to put Ms. Morris...
And I, I don't, I don't know that. I'm just going down my list of options and questions.
Donna's writing all this down. We will certainly research it.
Um, well, are there any other questions from the...
I think everybody's giving you the floor at the moment.
Okay, well, feel free to... Please!
Dr. Webb, seeing on the topic of core capacity, in the presentation, you discussed the option of do not have to reassign that would require 49 new mobile classrooms.
Remember, I shared in that presentation, that was a 49 mobile units. Some of them were classrooms or learning cottages. Some were restroom units. Some were, would have even, if needed, the additional space to provide lunchroom for kids to sit down and eat. So you have to look at that. The prices of those units vary from $49,000 is our history of getting the unit, to, you know, $61,000 for the restroom unit.
In the 49 units you specify then, do they not impact the core capacity at all at any of the schools?
No, remember, that impacts your overall footprint of your building, but it does not expand unless it's a cafeteria unit. It doesn't expand the cafeteria footprint, doesn't expand the media center. We'd have to add for office, so you've got to factor all that in.
But the mobile units don't put us over a core capacity limit, or just push them down?
No, we allotted for, if we went with the mobile units, that we would be able to meet those basic needs.
Dr. Webb, do we have existing mobile units that we could repurpose to these schools rather than having to buy new ones?
My last count, and please don't hold me exactly as I'm going from memory, was right around, we had right around 288. Are we down to 260? Because we've had to decommission some of them. We have, I'd hate to tell you, we have several that we could use. The reason for that is now with the new codes, the pillars that have to be built, we have to lift them with a crane to set them. And we're afraid that many of those that we might have would not be able to withstand that. Most of our mobile units are used.
Mr. Chairman, I have a few questions for staff and some of the members on the board here. When it comes to safety, when we start discussing variances, that kind of concerns me. Just, Dr. Webb or Dr. Ellis, as far as incidents of violence in the school, is that a commonplace occurrence in Union County schools?
Could you please repeat your question, Mr. Stewart?
Incidents of significant violence that would require, say, the intercession of a SRO to contain a combative student or an unruly parent that may come to the school? That's not really a common occurrence, is it?
It's not.
Would it be prudent to thereby recommend that we abolish SRO positions in our school, in your professional opinion?
No.
Absolutely not.
No, no.
My second question is, as far as fires that occur in the schools that require evacuation or place students in harm's way. I know our buildings are pretty much fire-resistant construction by state standards. Are occurrences of major fires in a school a commonplace occurrence in Union County public schools?
No, sir, not unless a child sets the trash can.
By the same, the same token, would it be wise, because of the lack of probability, to eliminate fire alarms based on the fact that it's a rare possibility? Would that be prudent, in your professional opinion?
No.
Dr. Webb, furthermore, as far as the standards for safe shelter in brick and mortar for severe weather or lockdowns due to an active shooter situation, the Department of Public Instruction, the North Carolina Department of Emergency Management, the NC Justice Department, as well as all our involved local officials are part of the core group that set these standards and some of the folks you consult with, right? This isn't anything that you just pull out of the air. These are professionals that do this day in and day out. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And as far as weather situations, you know, the possibility of a tornado hitting or not hitting, there again, the probability may be low, but that's a real possibility.
It is.
An advance warning through text, Doppler radar, or whatever means, is just another tool to make sure that we get students into proper shelter in a proper timeframe. Wouldn't you agree?
I would. As with anything dealing with safety, is trying to minimize a catastrophic situation, and the Doppler helps minimize that.
Okay. So let's say that, I'm going to direct this to Marcy Savage or Sherri Hodges. Let's say we seek some kind of variance, and we exceed safe core capacity. We don't have adequate space to put students in brick and mortar. Exactly whose children do you intend to leave in harm's way when this occurs?
Safety is always a first priority. Safety is a first priority for anybody. It is a basic human need. I don't think that you will find anyone who is going to say that safety is not the top priority in our schools. I don't know that I have enough information about core capacity at this point. So I am trying to educate myself to have a better understanding of exactly what the core capacity is as it relates to safety for our children.
If I may add to the full board, there are no variances for building code requirements on life safety issues by statute, none.
Dr. Webb, and also, life safety, design capacity of schools is regulated by the North Carolina State Building Code Council, is it not, and the North Carolina Department of Insurance? This isn't a local call for us to make, is it?
That is correct.
But let me remind you that Marvin is an evacuation site that houses 5,000 people.
And that evacuation site is part of a plan to evacuate neighbors that are affected by the Catawba Nuclear Station down in York County, South Carolina. It's not for a tornado shelter or anything of that mean. So let's make, let's make that clear. Dr. Webb, one other question.
Easy, folks.
As far as these additional funding, Dr. Ellis, you feel free to weigh in as well. As far as the diversion of funding, either from instructional tracks or the 6,000 series and our support services, we're already at a $283 million deficit in correct and deficiency, deficiencies we have in the schools now. That's why we just endured a rather arduous lawsuit with the county commissioners. And we've only partially recovered if we are awarded the full judgment by the jury. Do we have any money available in instruction, support services, or in capital to offset any of these additional costs?
Go ahead and stand up, please.
Excuse me, with all due respect, I respect all of my board members, and I love them as family, treat them as family, and I do the same thing for our administrators and our central services. I please, personally, I ask you to treat them with the same respect.
I repeat my question to you again, just to be crystal clear. Are there any additional monies that we can leverage as a Board of Education without additional funding from outside sources to address any of these other options?
The county has us locked tight on capital. We have to go to them for approval for every penny, and they have to approve every penny. There is no capital money, period whatsoever. We are in the hole, about 71 million, I think, Dr. Webb and I talked about today, if the 9.5 comes through from the county commissioners. And that's only based on the 91, not based on the 283 from the CFS that was done in 2009 and 2010. With regard to local monies, we, every penny is appropriated. We get, Mr. Stewart and board members, we get positions in the main. We don't get dollars in the main. And what dollars we do get are earmarked by either the federal government, we cannot touch that. By the county, I think I said earlier in the presentation, they've locked us down, that said, you cannot take money out of these accounts. They did it by statute. They have that right. And then with our state money, and precious little of that comparatively, that comes to us in dollars and all that, majority, that goes to programs and things that are already established. So we do not have, like, millions of dollars just laying around to do this. If directed, we would have to, we would have to take from existing programs to find the money. Or seek approval from the county commissioners through capital, like for buses, or building additions, or new schools, or add to our local current expense for other things from the county commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, I just think from the time the first student gets on a bus in the morning through the time the last student gets off in the afternoon, we're entrusted to provide safe, secure, and healthy environments for these children. That should be a number one priority. Number two, we're entrusted to provide a viable instructional environment. But I have deep reservations about compromising either safety or the instructional setting to generate extra funds. And like I say, that's, as far as the facilities committee is concerned, we started talking about this back first of 2013. Folks were involved in the process with recorded meeting minutes. This isn't anything that just came out of nowhere recently. It's been an ongoing process. We've engaged professionals in the form of demographer. We've consulted professionals in the interest of safety and those concerns. And like I say, this has been a comprehensive look at a lot of things. But some folks are making light of some issues, like I say, the variance that might compromise safety or something like that. And frankly, that's a slippery slope.
I don't think any of us up here are diminishing, we have a problem. And I don't think any of us are denying that. Where I am is that I keep, you know, we're listening, we're collecting information, we're hearing from our constituents. But at the same time, I'm reading our policy over and over. And I keep looking at policy 413, administrative guidelines, student assignment plans, and what stick out to me. Number four, adhere to neighborhood schools concept. Number five, limit the number of transition for same students. Number six, minimize the negative social and emotional impact on students from being separated and... Number seven, utilize long-term planning. Number eight, minimize transportation costs and ride times. Number 13, maximize quality of life and stability. Number 14, maximize community and school relationships. Number 18, consider negative impacts on students, staff, and faculty. And I know that you are hearing to this, but this, maybe I'm looking at this like from the show Friday Night Lights, Clear Mind, Open Heart, and that's how I'm looking at it. And maybe, you know, maybe I'm looking at it from my heart. But that's, this is what Scotty Morris is telling.
Mr. Chairman, I have one more comment. Is it possible that we could get a McKibben-like proposal report on, as I think as Ms. Hodges alluded to, maybe one where we grandfathered first school, you know, not throughout, but elementary, middle, and then high, and then one where we grandfathered rising sophomores, juniors, and seniors, where once you touched high school.
Seated high schools.
Yes, seated high schools. Option A and option B.
I didn't hear what you said, sir.
I'm sorry. Could we get a report, could somebody run the numbers for us to show us what if we took, if we looked at two different options of kind of a phased redistricting, where we did, where you were grandfathered without transportation, maybe, where you grandfathered in the elementary, you grandfathered in the middle, and then you grandfathered in the high school. You don't get to phase through. You just grandfathered in those schools. That would be option one. Option two would be to grandfather all seated high schools. And look at the numbers in the McKibben report of what would happen if we did those two things.
Certainly, we can run the numbers for you. That's not an issue. And then you guys can have the information to determine what you choose to do.
I would like to see them, if you don't mind.
We can have those by the February meeting, the February 4th meeting, certainly. Donna, you're writing that, you get that? Okay.
Grandfathering, I'll see the high school is one of my questions, too. But Dr. Webb, I asked you, I sent you an email early in the week in regards to charter schools, since the state has approved so many in Union County. Can you touch on that? And do you have any approximation of how many UCPS students we will lose? I know that's kind of... I know that's kind of, you know, digging into the future, but do you have any of that information?
I can tell you that we've discussed this, and there are three that are going to be, they're up for approval in April. And if approved, they would open in August 2015. And if approved, it's a phase-in. They eventually will go, I don't know if it's, I would assume it's K-12, but they're starting out K-8, I believe. That's where they're starting out first, and they're looking at starting out, Rob and I looked at those numbers, it's around 2,000 if all three of them are approved and they fill all their seats, and then they would phase into just a shade over 3,000, adding a grade level or two. I don't know what their plans are a year to do that. Now, and we've talked about this, and I don't have a crystal ball for this, because here's the conundrum that I'm in, that when asked about what will it do to us, well, I think possibly that folks will, some folks will leave if any kind of something they don't like goes through. I certainly have that right as a parent, everybody does, but if they are happy with whatever the decision is, I think fewer of them may go. I don't know, there is no way, but the bottom line is if it opens in 2015, it could impact us up to 2,000 students, but we already have students going to 11 different charter schools right now, and we're still growing, so I don't have a crystal ball to, but I can tell you those numbers, that's what they proposed in their plannings. One of them is located in Valentine, and I don't know the names of them, and one of them is located up sort of northern Union County, Cabarrus, and Stanley County, and the third one escapes me right now where it is. I don't, Waxaw, third one's in Waxaw, according to Mr. Jackson.
And another thing is, has any town council, any town council or BOCC planning board, have they sought any information from UCPS about the capacity of our schools?
We do. I'll allow, Don serves in response to this, I'll allow Mr. Hughes to respond.
Yeah, we get regular requests from the Town of Waxaw, Town of Indian Trail, sometimes, usually the City of Monroe, and usually the county. They ask our opinion on how a development may affect schools, and we respond that the capacity is so right now, if you do this, it may increase or will or will not increase capacity, or it'll overcrowd it or further overcrowd. But they ask us, and we always respond when they ask. Wesley Chapel has never asked us anything. And let's see, we don't hear much from Marshville and the other ones, but mainly Waxaw asked, in fact, they asked me to come to TRC meetings, and Town of Indian Trail is good, and the City of Monroe and the county.
So, Mr. Hughes, when they get this data, what do they do with it?
I do not know, because we let them know if it's going to increase the overcapacity or not, and...
Ms. Helms, I asked Mr. Hughes, once they receive the impact study, what does he know that the municipalities do with that information? Does it change what their process is, or does it affect how they...
They have never denied a subdivision, even when we say it's going to increase overcrowding. It's my knowledge, anyway.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes. How are we doing, folks? We got more questions?
Dr. Webb?
Go ahead, Mr. Gussman.
From the maps that were presented last week, I was going through a number of the feeder lines and checking out capacities going from elementary through high school. And obviously, you realize when that adds a elementary footprint, gets bigger, you can actually push high school over capacity, you can push a middle school over capacity. So you have, there's that balance going, you've got full feeder, you have to be aware of. There were two feeder lines that seemed to be under capacity, though, from elementary right through high school. One was the Kensington-Cuperson line seemed to be a little light. I'm not quite sure why, I think that's taken into consideration in all the building and all everything in the McKibbin report, and Antioch-Wadeington line also seemed a little bit light, and I just wasn't quite sure why that seemed, those two seemed a little bit lighter than the rest.
I'd have to go back through, you know, the maps with you, but I'm a little confused with the Kensington because it's currently capped. Kensington's currently capped at this point in time. I need to make sure that you're looking not at the current forecast sheet, I mean, at the proposal, but you're looking at the forecast sheet, because Kensington's capped. If you look at Cuperson Middle School, it's projected to be capped in overcapacity through the next, well, if you look at McKibbin's report, it's, I think, through the entire report, but at least through ours, through the next five years. So that's what I'm, I would need to look and make sure that you are looking at the, not the proposal, but at the original forecast, because Kensington's capped currently, so therefore, there's, you know, we've got to get that going down.
I talked about the proposal.
Correct. And the reason that those are down is to, again, we had to move, and we knew where the Crescent growth was coming, that Dr. Ellis shared with you earlier, and we allowed room for the growth to take place, so you're not back in a situation of capping again.
Well, I don't have another question right now. I'm sure that I will, and I know that this is a work in progress, but it has been a very difficult week and then some, and just so that I could have my thoughts collected, I just, I typed some out, and I just wanted to share them with you.
Are you ready for announcements to do?
Well, I really would like to just say what I'm feeling about what is going, what the process is and where we're going with this. It's not really, it's not an announcement. Fellow board members, I want to take the time to thank you for your service on this board. Commitment to public service is admirable and rarely understood. We all have families that have sacrificed, and it has been a trying past couple of weeks, and really, it has been a trying past seven months. That being said, I am very concerned about the direction towards redistricting as proposed as an option to deal with our growth. I find the timing of it is unsettling, as we are still in a lawsuit with the Board of County Commission, and the last thing we need right now is any other fracture to this board. I am not convinced of the urgency at this time to uproot families across the entire county. When we know the growth is not countywide at this point, in my opinion, right now, our focus should be to heal and improve the relationship with the county commission, to work to have the appeal dropped, get our money, and fix our buildings, as we have planned in our facilities study. We must continue to attract committed teachers and solidify our course offerings across the system. Our strong stakeholder support can assist us to use this process and see it through and ensure that all of our facilities have exactly what they need. If we have a need for a new school, then we must ask the county. If we have a need to expand an existing campus, then we must ask the county for the money. For too many years, we did not ask for the funds we needed, and we kicked the can down the road, and I don't want to do this now. I don't, I can't imagine we would ever want to go through what we have just been through again. Assuming that we will not get the money, I think is a mistake, and I'm not saying that we need new schools right now, but if we need them in the future, then we probably should start to ask now. I'm concerned that if we have a quick fix to this problem, it shifts the responsibility where it truly lies. And I think about innovation as being one of our mantras, and I don't ever want to underestimate the innovation of the number-one school system in this state to fall back on doing things because they are the cheapest, quickest way to solve our problems. Our children deserve better, and they deserve our time. We have great teachers, we have excellent administrators, and we have wonderful families countywide. Surely, we can all come together and take our time to come up with a solution that has a far less impact on our children than a system-wide reassignment. The real issue here, the real issue here is the need for managed growth in this county. I don't know, I don't know if this board alone can impact that, but I know that with all the talented citizens and resources we have in this community, we can be strong agents for change. I just ask that you please consider these thoughts and let us take our time as we ensure that we've left no stone unturned when it comes to looking at the options before us. Our school system is this county's most valuable asset, and we must continue to cherish and protect it.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to delay tonight's vote and continue to calmly and rationally examine all of these options and see which, please. See which avenue is the best to pursue for all of the children of Union County Public Schools.
Mrs. Hodges, or excuse me, Mrs. Evans, I appreciate your motion. This is a work session, we will not be voting on anything this evening. Votes will take place on this in April. So, we're going to take our time, we're going to research, we're going to listen, we're going to ask questions. We're going to research what Mrs. Hodges and Mrs. Helms and Mr. Gussman and Mr. Pig have asked for. We're going to research what Mr. Stewart has asked for, and we're going to get back together at some point and do this again. We're going to take our time, and we're going to make sure we're doing this right. There is no vote this evening because this is a work session. Ms. Helms? Moving on to Agenda Item Number Seven, Announcements. Anybody have an announcement? Moving on to Agenda Item Number Eight.
Oh, yes. Policy Committee, we are going to try to meet before the February board meeting, so how long? So six, 5:30? 5:30 at Sandy Ridge Elementary?
All right. Plus deltas.
Mr. Chairman, the plus, I think, is that we're starting a dialogue and looking at a lot of different options. The delta of the situation, of course, is there are a lot of ramifications in any direction we go, and I know a lot of people probably didn't want to hear about my concerns about safety tonight. That's very real. It's very real to hear about maintaining facilities. We have that challenge right now. We can talk about what we need to be doing and where we're headed, but as far as making rubber hit the road every day, that's a tough challenge. It's been tough, so this isn't an easy decision, so we need to keep that in mind.
Well, I think that a plus, though, is, if I can go back to, that we can all engage in discussion and get our questions answered, and feel free to express our feelings and our thoughts on this very important issue. So I appreciate that this board can work together and has worked well together and will continue to work together in respecting each other's thoughts and opinions.
And I appreciate everybody on the board for the fact that we do do that, that we are happy to engage with each other, and it's all good. All right? With that, I am going to call us in recess, and we will reconvene in closed session. Thank you.
So we didn't worry about timeline approval. Yeah.
All right, I'm going to come down the road, just for FYI. It's what we need to do for, like, situations like this happening, I'm going to hit everybody. We're going to need to...